Okay, I have five o'clock, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. There's no pledge tonight. Please note for the minutes that Dave Clot is absent. So we have five members. Item two, approval of today's agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
One more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Item number three, our study session. Jerry Bejack's here to talk about the Europe summer trip and then to seek approval for a trip in March. Jerry?
All right, thanks. So as some of you may know, travel's kind of my big passionate thing. And so a couple of years ago, fall of 2013, I proposed doing a trip through EF. And so we went last summer. So we had forty of us, twenty-two were kids from the high school. There were three staff, Neil, Diane, and myself. And we went for nine days total. We were gone. We flew into Athens and came back from Rome. We saw a lot of, obviously, historic sites. It was the main focus, which is a little bit different from the one I'm going to be proposing. So anyway, for those of you that are like geography stuff, so there we go. So that was our trip. They actually flipped it on us. We were going to go Rome to Athens, but because they, EF has a, you can do extra excursions. They had a cruise that went out into the Aegean, and none of the people in my group went and decided to do that. So it got flipped around, which was no big deal. The line there, we took an overnight ferry from Greece to Italy, which was way, way, way better than I thought it was going to be. So anyway, there's the kids. We did a coming-back picture. It didn't turn out nearly as well, but they're the kids that went. So they were kids who had finished grades eight through twelve. We had three, four seniors that went. Just some various sites. I put a lot of pictures of kids. This is Rika Borzma at Epidaurus, which is, you know, there's so many ancient Roman sites. And so this was a neat spot because it was one of the most intact amphitheaters from that era. And so where she was standing in the middle, the acoustics are so cool that, I don't know, I can't remember how many rows up we were, but it was a long ways. You could hear her singing perfectly. The acoustic, it was really cool. And so she's a theater choir person, so she kind of ate that up. This is Alexa Drescher, and with a selfie stick. And you might be wondering what's the point of that? One of the cool things about this was just getting kids to step out of their comfort zone a little bit. So her dad, her mom and dad went, and her older sister went too. Anyway, there's these guys selling selfie sticks, of course, everywhere. And she's like, "I want one, I want one." And I said, "Well, why don't you go see how much they cost?" And "I don't want to do that, I want to talk to them. It'll be fine, we're right here." And so her dad had to convince her by bribing her, basically. "I will pay for half of it." And I said, "Just, you know, you're going to get a deal out of it. How much would it cost in the United States?" "Ah, fifteen, twenty bucks." I said, "Guaranteed, you're going to be able to get it for five euros at the most." And so she did, and so she stepped out of her comfort zone. Even it was goofy, whatever, but she was just proud of that selfie stick the entire trip, so who's to know? This is the first site of, first Olympics in Olympia. And I said, "A couple of students," even though they weren't wrestlers, I said, "This was the area where they did the wrestling competitions. So, hey, guys, go pretend like you're wrestling." I still haven't shown that to Goody, but maybe someday. One of the things we did was, there was a kind of a cultural night out sort of experience, and this is an extra excursion. Now, the picture didn't show up all that well, but there was a student whose mom and dad went too. And she had some personal issues and stuff like that her mom would talk about on the trip. And they did a dancing seminar, or dancing lessons and just all sorts of performance stuff. They said, "Well, can we get some kids come up there?" And there were probably a hundred and some kids in the room. And this girl went up on stage, and she was just, this belly, it was belly dancing part. And she was doing the belly dancing part and just totally getting into it. And her mom was recording it. And she looked over at me, because we had the discussion about, you know, the girl having these issues and whatever, and things are getting better. And the moms look on her face, I was just like, "Yep." That was the high point, you know, because it was like, it was cool. This is when we were getting on the overnight ferry. Some of the people, you may recognize, some of the people you don't. There was a group that came with us from, a small group from Tennessee. And so there were six people that came with from Tennessee.
You're a week late.
So overnight ferry was like, I've never been on a cruise, but it was like a cruise ship, just not fancy, with semis on it all over. Anyways, cool. This is the back of our guide. He was awesome. There's a good chance, his name's Christian, he's Italian, and there's, part of the reason why I'm going to propose a trip that I am is that he does the tour that I'm proposing as well. And I've been in contact with him, and he's like, "Yeah, I could do that." Well, anyway, we got a Minnesota flag, so everywhere we went, we just, we knew where we were because he had the Minnesota flag. This is our group at the Roman catacombs. You know, they started to kind of hang out with each other in different little groups throughout the entire trip. And so, you know, there were kids from four different age grade, you know, grades, so made it nice. This I only put there because if you're ever in Rome, Trevi Fountain, take a left and go about half a block, that is the greatest pizza place in the history of the world. This is below the Spanish Steps towards the end of our trip as we're waiting. Sometimes these trips involve a lot of waiting, but that's our group at the top. And, you know, everyone got along super well. There was no drama, there was no issues. The only headache we had, well, we had, there were two. For the whole group, a bus got a flat tire, but we weren't on it, thankfully. And then one of the parents lost his phone on the bus, and that took, or on, yeah, on one of the buses. That took about a month to get back to the U.S., but that was it. These guys make it look like they would fight. There were four boys that went on the trip, and three of them just continually punched each other, good-natured fun. So anyway, I had to get a reminder of that experience. And then for me, it was great. Two of my daughters went along with, and so that was at the Parthenon, obviously, in Athens. And, I mean, all sorts of people had, there were thousands of, thousands of pictures taken. But that was one of my favorites. So what I'm, first of all, are there any questions about the trip we did?
All the kids came back.
All the kids came back. Yep, that was the definition of success. Yeah. And we, it was great because we were able to get all forty of us on the same flight. There are times we get a big group where they've got to split us up. That didn't happen, so we had a hundred percent.
How do you see this ride back to school?
Depending, it depends on the kids. For the world history, ninth grade world history class, I mean, the first quarter, that's a lot, you know, some of the stuff that they talk about. I know in humanities, it totally connects. My daughter, Raylan, is a senior in Todd Lang's class, and she's got to do a project, and she's doing ancient Greek architecture. So she's got plenty of pictures, and, you know, I saw that sort of stuff. So the one I'm proposing is in March of 2017. The reason I'm proposing March is it's much cheaper. How much cheaper? About twenty-five, almost twenty-five percent cheaper than going in the summer because of the busy season. So there's the basic places that we'd be going to. Cinquetera's, you've probably seen pictures of it. It's in the northwestern part of Italy, right along the coast. But all the different colored, pastel kind of colored houses right on the cliffs, very scenic. So that's that. And then we'd basically hug the coast of the Mediterranean, following the arc all the way down to Spain. Do it over spring break. The kids would not miss any school days, you know, assuming that there are no flight issues. With French being offered, I talked with the French instructor, Peter, and he was, you know, just kind of thrown out there, tell them this is initial planning stages, and, you know, we'll see where that goes. Obviously, the French program. One thing else I will say before we begin to just show the quick slides, the links. I know choir oftentimes goes on a trip during spring break. And I've talked with Diane, and basically saying, "This is not in any way trying to compete with what you do. This is for students who aren't in choir." You know, and if students are in choir, I'm going to be forthright with them right away saying, "Hey, Miss Haney does a trip, and I don't know anything about it really yet, but I would encourage you to do the choir trip because that's part of a class. This is just a different sort of experience." And so that's the other reason why I wanted to offer it, was because students who aren't in Spanish and who aren't in choir in school, they really have no major travel options. So that's the reason I'm doing it. So Diane's aware of it, and we've talked, and hopefully I put her concerns to rest. So, anyway, if you want to take a look at the links real quick. So how EF does it real quick? The sooner you sign up, the better. So that's the cause for the students and the adults right now. Includes everything, including the insurance. And the only thing that's not included in that is if they do a couple extra excursions. The extra excursions were seventy to eighty dollars. So one of them is, let's see, it was in Barcelona, kind of a cultural experience, sort of like we did in Greece. And another one is visiting a castle fortress place in France, yeah. And the, so those are the dates. The June eighth and sixteenth, she just screwed that up, so that's not a big deal. I have the same trip consultant with them, and so we're very familiar. We've talked dozen, I mean, like probably a hundred times, I've had phone calls with her. Everything else is the same. EF is, I mean, really good. I mean, I had, I had a parent that went on the trip that said, "Other than my kids being born and getting married, this is the highlight of my life." Okay, that's pretty good, thanks. And the parents just, everybody, kids and parents, everything was great, so maybe I should quit while I'm ahead, but I'm a glutton for punishment. And then the, just to get an idea of the itinerary, I don't know how big this is going to show up on this, even with the big screens. So you need, you know, there's Cinquetera, or one part of it. This is definitely going to be more cultural rather than historic. I mean, there's not the Parthenon, the Colosseum, and the places that we're going. Certainly more emphasizing the scenic nature and the geography. There you can see the map outline of it all. We will be in Nice. I was hoping it was going to be Marseille. I don't know if anybody saw CNN last night, Anthony Bourdain went to Marseille. Interesting place right on the coast, but...
I've been there. It's beautiful.
Yeah, yeah. So if you can keep going down a little bit further, and go to the, yeah, there we go, keep going to one more. So there's the itinerary as far as the number of days and where we'd stay overnight. I doubt any, I'm going to actually, if anybody says, "Can we do the extension?", they're going to be on their own if they do that. And for the kids, I mean, it's like, "No, you got to get back to school." So that's the short part of the trip.
Thanks, Jerry. Trips are action items by the board, so I would entertain a motion to approve the trip as described by Jerry. Is there a second? Okay, any discussion?
I have a question about, so are the excursions, they can choose that individually too? And can a student choose that, and would a chaperone go with?
Yeah, so how we did, there were, on a couple of the other excursions, there were some students that didn't want to go. It's like the catacombs, there were some kids that were like, "If you're claustrophobic." And so Neil stayed back one time and was with the group. And then the Greek evening, Diane stayed back and was with the kids. So those kids had a school staff member with them at all times. Yeah, we didn't let the kids, they were a little, I mean, the kids had to be with adults. Yep.
Questions?
Yeah, it's my passion, so it makes it easy.
All right, all in favor, aye, aye? Anyone opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Jerry.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. All right, item 3.3 and 3.4, the overview of the teacher Chromebook training, and then the introduction to the student data system. Ken Griswold. And Ken, if you could finish by 5:18, I'd really appreciate, no. That's an inside joke. We had a nineteen-minute meeting when I wasn't here, so trying to get underneath that, so... But, no, thanks for coming. Take as long as you need.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a quick update on Chromebook training and the rollout this fall, and some of the things that we've seen positive, and some of the bits and couple of bumps, and then if there are any questions you have.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim. Got to get used to these microphones. Yeah. Let me get signed in here, so I don't do that later. Okay, there we go. So, yeah, this is just Mark Neckinigie, who's a fourth-grade teacher at Lakeview and also a building tech integration coach. I've been encouraging our building tech integration coaches to share the things that they're doing, and then through social media, and different coaches are going to have different ways of doing that this year. They're sharing resources with other staff through social media, and also things that they're doing in the classroom. And so this is one from a couple of weeks ago. He's in one of the pilot classrooms at elementary, and so this was his students working on a Google Doc and sharing their favorite books and commenting on each other's favorite books and asking questions and so on, all working in the same document at the same time, which is something that's really, in the classroom as well, sitting around, talking as well. So it's sort of a good visual that shows sort of the power of collaborating in an online space, and then also doing it at the same time, in the same document, in the same learning space that they do the rest of their learning. So this is something that Chromebooks can afford us as we move forward. And one of the things I suggested to Mark is that they return to this document periodically throughout the year. So as students are dabbling and reading more, they can return to the document and follow up on each other's recommendations and add to them. So by the end of the year, they'll have a really nice record of what they've been doing as a class and what they've been reading. So it doesn't take long to do this. You know, I think you maybe spent ten or fifteen minutes doing this, and so this is a document they can keep coming back to. So I thought that was a good example of the kinds of things we hope to see more of. So again, our goal for the program in general, as we expand mobile learning for teachers and students, is to try to achieve a student-centered learning environment where we can increase access to educational resources anytime and anywhere. And so our first step, as we talked about last May when I presented to you, is to, well, maybe not our first step, but our next step was to equip staff with a mobile device so that they could take advantage, learn the tool, learn the platform, and take advantage of all the same collaboration tools that we hope students will be able to take advantage of. And so just sort of marking our progress, what we did last year, we launched our pilot at middle school, at the high school, and we expanded that to elementary during the year. And we implemented building tech integration coaches as a model, one staff member in each building who serves as a coach for the rest of the staff in the building, sharing resources, providing training, answering questions, and reporting back to myself and to the district tech committee about ongoing and emerging needs so that we can meet those as they occur. And Google Apps for Education, we rolled out last year for all staff, even before Chromebooks, beginning of the year last year, and grade six through twelve students had access to Google Apps for Education. And so that was, and we also did research. We had a research team looking at mobile learning initiatives. We visited two school districts, I reported on that last spring. And we started really thinking about, as we adopt new curriculum and make decisions about resources and things that we choose, we were being even more deliberate about thinking about what this looks like as we increase access to digital resources. Can the choices we may make, will they go along with us? So that we're making smart choices about what we choose to adopt in the district. And that really fed into the math curriculum discussions, I know, in the adoption for that, adoption cycle of that last year, for example. And then this year, we've extended the current pilots, and we've expanded the pilot by adding shared carts at our middle school and high school. And those have seen a lot of use already. I've been tracking that. And just about every day, one or both of those carts in both buildings are being used for most of the day. So we've already seen a lot of adoption of that, which I'm really excited about. And I think having the pilots in those buildings last year helped make a nice transition because they're aware of what was going on in the pilot classrooms last year, and they're taking advantage of that. We provided Chromebooks to all licensed staff, and we invited staff to get theirs early by attending training in the summer. And by the end of the summer, we had ninety percent of staff trained. And by the end of the staff week, we had ninety-eight percent of the staff trained. And I'm finishing a few makeups this week, and by the end of the week, we'll have a hundred percent trained, two-hour training, beginning orientation, learning how to use the Chromebook. So we got a good start there. And then further on this year, we're going to build and extend our action, I mean, our research team from last year to develop an action plan for next year as we consider the first year of really extending devices to our middle school students in grade six and seven. As part of that, we're going to be surveying all teachers and students, and then ultimately parents, using Clarity by Bright Bites, and that'll be rolled out the end of this month for our first data collection, and we'll follow up with that again in the spring. So we can really track, get a baseline, and then track changes as we provide training and so on, to understand where we are in terms of classroom environment, access, skills and skills, as it supports technology integration. And we'll develop a detailed plan to roll out for grade six and seven during this school year. We are refining the coaching model. I did another day of training with those coaches this summer, and we're really making sure that we are, have our finger on the pulse of the needs in each building, and provides targeted support for staff as they learn to use these tools. And we're also really excited, we got E-Rate funded, funding went through this year, our proposal, and so that's going to allow us to do a complete wireless network upgrade at Southwest and the high school this year, and then through the summer next year, which will be really nice to be prepared and set the groundwork to really have a top-notch.
So we received $155,000 to do this, correct?
Yep, yep.
So this is federal funds the district is receiving to upgrade our network.
Yep, yep. It's part of the reform of E-Rate, which really funnels federal dollars toward wireless infrastructure in the buildings, rather than just, you know, your hard lines between buildings, which it used to be. Now, the idea is to really support the kinds of things we're doing. So we're doing this at the right time to get additional support for that. So this is what the components of that plan might look like, or the pieces of the plan that we're going to be considering as we develop that. But I wanted to just talk about staff while we went with Chromebook and just remind you of a couple of things. Again, it's about access anytime, anywhere. It's about giving staff ample time to master the platform and the device before we expand anymore for students. It's about supporting transition to digital learning environment, give staff the opportunity to really think about their own curriculum and what happens when every student has a device. How do I think about that and plan for that? And so we've got a whole year to really do that, and plus carts in the buildings to help them prepare as well for that and experiment with that. It's about shaping a culture of collaboration and communication. So as we adopt these tools and use them to support our work as staff, there's subtle mind shifts on the part of staff in terms of how they start to work. And once they make, once they kind of have that paradigm shift, I think we're already starting to see real important gains in terms of efficiency, in terms of their ability to use time wisely, to collaborate more frequently. And I'll share some examples of that in a minute. And then also the fact that teachers are taking these devices back and forth to school every day gives us an opportunity to sort of track what's the durability of these devices under those conditions. So again, by the end of this week, we'll have a hundred percent of licensed staff with a Chromebook and a hundred percent that have received initial training. This is a picture that Karen Zwolinski sent me from Hawthorne. She was, she was excited. She went into a plant, into, met with her kindergarten team, and they were co-planning on Chromebook, all working in the same document, planning, and she said, "I got to get a picture of this." So here they are. And so since then, we've seen, this was in the first week of school, I think, and so we've seen a lot of that all over the district. So, yeah, so some feedback specifically on the training. I did invite staff to provide evaluation through a survey, and one key thing I pulled out here is that ninety-five percent of those that responded to evaluation agreed that the content and strategies are going to be useful to them. So I thought that was a good indicator. And a couple of the comments pulled out were right in line with our goals, the ability to access their work more easily from anywhere, and the ability to communicate and collaborate more effectively with the colleagues, so. And then I got, out of the blue, an email from an instructional coach last week that included this line, that the amount of time I've already saved is incredible, thanks for the push, this new method of collaboration. So I think, again, we're seeing a lot of positive signs. So here are a few examples of how it's being used so far. ATPPS coordinators have developed the process for using Google Drive and Google Docs to support PLC work district-wide, and that's been set up and rolled out and been used now for two or three weeks. EL teachers are the first group of district-wide PLC to choose to use Google Hangouts to meet and collaborate online, so they can meet more frequently without having to travel across the district to meet together. We're using Google Sheets and forms in a number of ways to track things, to build custom solutions, to track specific things, such as credit recovery program, tracking attendance and seat time, which is a requirement of that program. They're using Google Sheets to log in students and log them out and to track seat time over time. And they can get really fine-tuned information about who attends when and how many times and how many minutes for that purpose. Behavior tracking, one of our preschool teachers out at United Preschool, they have one computer out there, district-on-district computer out there, and she's the one that has access to that computer. But she's developed the system using Google Forms where the two staff there can use their mobile phones to log behavior incidents, and that she could track those over time and by location and by incident type and all of that. So we're seeing a lot of these kind of innovation happening when staff get these tools and they're flexible enough and powerful enough that they can really jump out. Yeah, so there's, that's just a few examples. There's a few more here across the district where we're seeing these things being used at the teacher level, as well as at the classroom level in those pilot classrooms. So our priorities for this fall for professional development is to support PLCs and staff as the owner of Google Docs in particular, since that's the core of their PLC work, and that's really where we're starting. One thing that's come up is some concerns, and it's really due to not really understanding how sharing works very well in Google Drive yet. Some staff are nervous about that and protecting data, and they're a little concerned about that. And so one of the, that's come up in the last week or so, and I'd already done a few things, but we're, I've got a plan, we're going to make sure that all the building tech coaches meet with all staff by the end of the month, to be sure that they understand what best practices are when you go to share documents, particularly documents that include confidential data or protected data. So how do they do that and make sure that those things are in line with our policies? So I'll be sure, we'll be training on that shortly. Going to be doing ongoing support for pilot teachers. We are yet going to have a day of training this fall for those pilot teachers, just get what they've been doing so far, have them share, and then do some other, learn some other more advanced things beyond what they were able to do last year, so excited about that. And then our coaches, building tech coaches have developed, are developing a building-specific, excuse me, implementation plan for technology integration, and we'll be assessing those and moving forward. One thing that's important for me is to celebrate successes. I really think that empowering staff to become connected educators to sort of fill their own needs, providing the, a rich environment from which they can draw resources to support things as they arise and get connected to other people who are doing the same kinds of things they're doing, whether they're in our district or outside our district. To me, that's the best form of professional development because we're equipping staff then to really meet their own needs with our support. And so I really, that's a real focus for me, and that's a focus for our building tech coaches this year, and that we're, I've got a plan in place to continue to build that capacity this fall. So, yeah, so just, this is a quote I'll leave you with from John Dewey about sort of why we're doing what we're doing and the way we're doing it. So that's, that's the report on Chromebook training, that first part of the agenda. Any questions or comments?
Joe?
I have a question. What are the implications for substitute teachers? Do you anticipate in the future having to have instructional training for them, or maybe they'll need to be more specified to building? Do you anticipate in the future having to have instructional training for them or maybe they'll need to be more specified to building?
That's a great point. We had a big nine superintendent meeting about 10 days ago. And Mankato has a number of Chromebooks that their teachers use in the Mankato school system. And one of the takeaways that their superintendent mentioned was, as they move further into the Chrome network or evolution, she said they've actually had to purchase extra Chromebooks for the office for when substitute teachers came in so that they could hand us a Chromebook to a sub so then the sub would be able to log in and access. So yeah, that's absolutely a good question. And especially next year, as we go more one-to-one, that's something we're going to have to really look into.
I'll add to that a little bit, is that we have had those conversations and there's different models for ways to do it. And we're going to be determining based on our experiences this year, what's the best way to support that. And the other thing that's nice about Google Apps as a platform is that it's not device-specific. So, you know, a student, a teacher or a student can sign into a PC or an iPad or a Chromebook and have much the same experience and access to the same files and materials. And so we have that flexibility built into the model as well, which is nice to support uses like that. Any other questions?
Other questions, comments? Sounds exciting and sounds like the professional staff rollout's gone really well.
Yeah, I think, I think so. Yeah, when we're trying to stay on top of things as they emerge, like these questions about data privacy and things like that, we're, we're trying to address those in advance. And then where we, where there's gaps that are identified, we're doing, we have the process in place to really support those needs as they emerge.
When we do have private data and it's being transmitted between two teachers, is it, is it within our firewall or it goes into a Google?
Yeah, it goes into Google Apps. We have, so we own all our data. It's in Google Apps through our agreement. And it's encrypted onto our domain. And so only users that have a Google Apps for Education account on our domain can access that data. And only, they can only access their own data unless that data, those files have been specifically shared with another person or with a group of people. And so what I'm going to be recommending to staff is that, you know, data that's, you know, protected, private data, they want to be sure that they're not sharing that unless they're sharing it specifically with individuals that also are allowed to have access to that data, other teachers and officials of the school.
Very good. Other questions? All right, thank you very much. And you have some comments about the student data system?
Yeah, Dr. Funk asked me to show, one of the things we're working on, we've had this for a couple of years, but we haven't made much use of it yet. And I've recently attended some training that, that I was really excited about some of the value of this. So I'm going to try taking over the computer over here. Let's see if it works. Yep. So.
Yeah.
So, so yeah, so, so this, I just wanted to show, this is pretty cool. So this is part of what we do, the products that we have through, with Ties, partnership with Ties. And this is Cognos Connection. And we get data pulled from, from our assessments, which are loaded in, and then our state assessments and our other student data, and then also data pulled from our student information system. Now, this is demo data we're looking at here, not our actual data, because I want to show you the, how you can drill down to see individual students. I didn't want to include that data in this presentation. So this is demo data. But if I, you know, I can, and this is all controlled by, so administrator, this is administrator's dashboard. And if they're a principal at Washington Senior High, for example, then this is the dashboard they can include or something like this. And we're going to be modifying this slightly for our staff. But here, you know, we've got information about behavioral incidents. So we can see like how many students have one incident, two or three, four or five, six or seven, and then we can drill down. So if I want to identify, and this is comparing two years, 2014 and 2015. But if I wanted to, and this is again demo data, so it's not really accurate looking because it's, you know, it doesn't have much 2015 data in there right now. But I can click any of those points and see an actual list of students. So I can drill right down. So if I want to see, okay, which are my students that have four or five incidents? I just click that area of the chart and I can see those students listed. So it gives at the fingertips really good access to information and data, not just behavior though. You know, principals are excited about this, this one, for example, which students have birthday today. And so, you know, if you're doing something to announce those, or here it gives today's birthdays and the birthdays for the next seven days, you know, without having to dig it up or pull it out, it's just right there on the dashboard. You know, students that have, how many students have a 4.0 GPA? Can scroll down. We don't use MAP any longer, but we're going to be customizing this for the stuff we use. But we can see, you know, which schools, compare the district to elementary to high school to middle school. I can look at all these data points across all of these norm periods to see which percentage of students were above the target in math and then compare that to their results on the MCA, above target. Same thing for reading. And so I can get a good day-by-day snapshot, depending on what data has been added, of what's going on with my students. And I can drill down at any point. So again, if I want to identify those students at Washington Senior High that in 1415 that are above target, I can click that data point and it's going to give me a list of those students. Yeah, just a minute here. It's loading. Oh, no, it's going to make me, it's going to give me the opportunity to choose. So this is MCA 2. And I think this is because there's bad data here. Let me pick that at school. There we go. And reading, click finish. So anyway, I picked the wrong data point. One of the ones I clicked earlier just opened right away. But normally this should list, again, this is demo data, so I'm sure it's because of that. But this will list students in their, you know, whether it's special education, their gender, all the demographic data, their performance description. And then I can adjust any of these filters. So I can add schools, I can add tests, I can add levels and really drill down.
A couple of different examples would be, okay, if I'm a teacher in 8th grade at Albert Lee High School, I have these new 7th grade, kids who were 7th graders last year. I know nothing about these kids. So they can go on to Cognos and they can go and say, okay, I have a class list of these students. And then they can take a look at, okay, here's my student's reading ability, okay, or here's my math ability or whatever it may be. So they can then tailor assignments to, or reading text to the abilities of their students. The other thing that is very powerful about this is you can compare classroom teacher to classroom teacher. So for example, if I've, if I'm teaching 3rd grade math and I do, I have some units on whatever, multiplication in 3rd grade. Okay, and my kids score this and you see how they did with teacher A, well, how'd they do with teacher B? Well, teacher B, they seem to get this, this instruction better than teacher A. So then teacher A and B can sit down and can say, okay, what did you do differently than I did that these kids aren't getting it? And so the more our teachers can, can dig into this, the more when they have their professional learning meetings that take place on Wednesdays, really they can take a look at diving into data as far as what's effective and what's not effective. And principals, on the other hand, at the principal level, okay, if we have 4th grade MCAs and we have strands that are not doing very well, they can dig into the classrooms and look at, you know, what teacher's getting it and what's not. So I don't know what you got here, Ken.
Yeah, so I just want to, one of the things that I think's really, and I should make a distinction. So this building dashboard, this is administrator's view that we're looking at here. So this is not, a teacher would see much simpler, one-click reports that they can run, specific to the data that they need. And principals can run reports for teachers if they need to, that include more complexity. But this, this here ABC analysis is, shows all these pieces coming together. So here on this Venn diagram, this is showing, what I did is I set the parameters. I said, I want to see stu, I want to see students that have fewer than, less than 90% attendance and have at least two grades below C minus and that have at least two behavior incidents. So what we're seeing here is the crossover. So we're seeing, here's 231 students that had less than 90% attendance, 289 had two or more actions of suspension or dismissal, 746 that had two or more core grade courses below C minus, core courses. And here's where they crossover. So here's, here's the kids that kind of are really, we should be targeting because they're, they've got three of those points. This is the ones, hey, we really need to have an intervention with these kids. And I can click right here and here they are. So it's about, it gives us a lot of power for analysis. We have all these pieces of data, but a tool like this, when we learn how to use it effectively, can, can help us answer the kinds of questions we should be asking about students. Yeah, so, and again, it didn't show me a list, but it should show me a list of students there.
We have, we have, for the MCA data, we have to sign an agreement with MDE to let them load, Ties loaded into the system. So that's, that's MDE data. And then some other data, we crunch it and put it in there from our local assessments. And the synergy data, like student discipline and stuff, I think that flows through, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's set up, so that flows through every night at midnight. So it's up to date every day. It's a script. So behavior, attendance, all of that gets updated each night based on synergy data.
And you can access this, again, the security of this data, you have to be on a VPN to get at it, or?
No, but this is, only this, this side of it, this IBM Cognos is, that access is only for administrators and it's individually password-protected. And so it's the same, so when they log in to the Ties system using those credentials, then they have access to this data. And then it times out, you know, they sign out and it's.
Joe?
Are there any downsides in kind of bringing the student's history into, maybe they want, maybe they want to have a fresh start this year? Are there any downsides in kind of, kind of pigeonholing them into bad behavior?
From what I'm aware, I don't, I don't know if behavior is something that is looked at as more as academic need. I have not been aware of really any of the behavior sides of things. I think that's, I mean, he showed that to you as a comparison of what we can look at. But I think the classroom teacher is more focused on, okay, where are my kids at academically?
Well, what the research shows, we're not trying about pigeonholing kids, but what research does show is that kids that, kids that are most at risk are kids that have multiple factors. And there's lots of things that we get, have data on. But if we're not reading those against each other, sometimes people fall through the holes, kids fall through the holes. So what this does is helps focus those attentions on those students that, for whatever reason. Let's say that we had, you know, no behavior incidents last year and no behavior incidents in the first month of the school year. And then all of a sudden, we see a big increase. At the same time, we see grades going down and we see attendance decreasing. There's a crisis there that we need to be sure that we're helping to address. And this, these kind of tools really help us keep track of that. It's not about pigeonholing kids, but it's about making sure that we use the data we have to make smart decisions about what to do to support them to be successful.
Other questions? How about student members? Any questions or comments? Ken?
A lot of times, like the first week or two of school is a lot of analysis of what do you know? And it's a lot of repeat. And I know for a lot of my classes, which are like AP college classes, a lot of the students are annoyed and they're like, I don't want to do Algebra II again or something. So I think this is cool because it just gets straight to the point and it's efficient, so.
Other questions or comments? Anything else, Ken? Excellent work. Appreciate all your efforts, as always. Appreciate you coming.
One question. Can we upgrade our iPads to the next operating system? I never saw another email.
Yeah, I'm still, I'm trying to find enough time to do a rigorous test. Yes, you can. The ones I'm most concerned about right now are the ones that I have man, our student iPads, that I have managed because there's been some reports of when they update, some of the restrictions we have in place get disabled. So I want to make sure I have a nice rigorous test of that to be sure. But yes, you can upgrade iOS 9 if you want to, go ahead.
That was out of order, by the way. Thanks, Ken. All right, I think that's adjournment. Thank you, everybody.